Tuesday, July 28 at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. I'd like to ask Choctaw Councilman Robert Carr if you would lead us in the pledge and invocation, please.
Prayer first.
Either way.
Dear heaven father, we thank you for today, the rain you gave us and the beautiful day. We thank you for your many blessings on the city of McAllister and its citizens. We thank you for being able to meet here tonight and thank you for these councilmen and the city manager and employees of the city of McAllister and the job they do. We pray that you'll just continue to bless our city. We pray that you'll bless them tonight as they take care of the business of the city. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Boatright?
Here.
Pritchard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. We, since we have a full council now with new members, we are required to make a selection of vice mayor. We have to do this every time you get new members on the council. So I'm going to open the floor up to nominations.
I'd like to nominate James Brown.
Ahem.
On the line? Who was that on the line?
This is Councilman Stevens. I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Councilman Brown is the new vice mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank council members for confiding in me.
And I just want to take an editorial moment to thank Councilman Stevens. He did a very good job. Anytime I needed him to step up, he did, and he did so admirably, and I appreciate the job he did. Thank you. We'll now move to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address the council regarding, excuse me, an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address, and council requests that comments be limited to five minutes. I didn't have anybody sign up. We do have one person here. Were you wanting to address us on anything, ma'am?
Not particularly at this meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to give you the opportunity if you did.
Yes, I would like to address at a later date.
Okay. Thank you. In that case, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of minutes from July 14, 2020, regular meeting of the McAllister City Council; B, approval of claims from July 8, 2020 through July 21, 2020; concur with the mayor's appointment of Brenda Russell to the Audit and Finance Advisory Committee as replacement for Mr. Mike Kern. This term will expire March 31, 2022; D, consider an act upon indefinitely postponing tort claim followed by can or coffee. Would anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda? In that case, I would take a motion second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Boatright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are now on to agenda item number one, presentation and discussion on Choctaw Economic Development. And we have Choctaw Councilman and former Fourth Ward Councilman, Robert Carr, here.
Good evening, Mayor. I want to say chief and council. Mayor and council, Robert Carr, 520 West Hope in McAllister, Choctaw Nation Councilman for District 11. First off, I just want to say I appreciate you guys and the job y'all do for the city. I do miss the city and the city employees and the things we had going. After last Thursday's meeting, I'm not going to say I miss being on the council, but no, I appreciate what you guys do. Somebody's got to step up, and I'm glad you guys are. Tonight, I just wanted to bring this Economic Development Partnership Book. We got these out a couple of weeks ago. These are award-winning booklets that Choctaw Nation, actually, the last two years we received, only one in the state of Oklahoma that's received this award from, I don't remember exactly where it come from, but heard that today. And this is, community development is a big part of what Choctaw Nation wants for Southeast Oklahoma. We want to be partnered with the city of McAllister, with Pittsboro County, and with all the 10 and 1/2 counties in the, I guess, Choctaw Reservation now, since it's been affirmed as that in Supreme Court. But if you look at this Economic Development Partnership Book, I just want to go through it with you a little bit and highlight a few things. First page is our vision, gives us a definition of our seal, and then our mission statement down on the bottom says, "To the Choctaw Proud, ours is a sovereign nation, offering opportunities for growth and prosperity." Next page is our Tuscaloosa capital. Next page is the council and chief, and there's a letter here from the chief, and I agree with everything he says in this. I'd just like to highlight a few things. He says, "Holly tow," and then it says, "Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma takes great pride in strengthening our communities for sustained, long-term growth." The second paragraph there, the chief said, "We are committed to grow in Southeast Oklahoma and take great pride in our past, incessantly work to improve our present, and look ahead for the opportunities that connect people in meaningful ways." The third paragraph, it says, "In fiscal year 19, we celebrated our community investment of more than $350 million in healthcare, housing, education, and provided support for more than 16,000 jobs in Oklahoma." I like to say that Choctaw Nation has 11,000 employees, and probably 60% of them are non-native. So they're people in Southeast Oklahoma that, we do got great benefits, great pay, and we support a lot of people in Southeast Oklahoma, and our main goal is to support the Choctaw people, but we, again, support a lot of individuals and businesses and communities that we partner with in Southeast Oklahoma. It says, "We've opened a new head start, childcare center, tribal plazas, and a country market. We built more than 200 homes for Choctaw tribal members, as well as donated 1.6 million to our community partners. We completed a master plan for our state-of-the-art unmanned aerial systems research park in Daisy." That's something that I'm really excited about, and I know the tribe is, because it's just 30 miles from McAllister. We partnered with Textra with its Bell helicopter, and they've been down there. We're building right now, we put in our budget this year, we've started building a park down there for, it's got hangars, it's got a research and development building, and it's got pads where they can land their, we call them drone taxis, and start developing them things and researching them, and hopefully in a few years, I believe that's going to be the future. You know, we watched George Jetson when we were kids flying across the city. That's what these drone taxis is going to do, and we're hoping it explodes, and Southeast Oklahoma will be a big part of that. So we're really excited about that. Oklahoma, that's in Daisy, Oklahoma, and we are continuing construction of our Choctaw Cultural Center that will open this fall. The tribe is forward-looking, and this year, we proudly broke ground on our largest capital project in history, a $585 million casino resort expansion in Durant. This investment will add 1,000 hotel rooms to our resort with new amenities, and it will create more than 1,200 new jobs in Durant. The last paragraph, the chief said, "We are Choctaw proud, and the 2.4 billion annual economic impact we make to the state of Oklahoma poses us to continue to serve as an enduring tribe. I invite you to join in my enthusiasm as we look ahead for sustainable economic growth and prosperity." I think I was in a meeting, it's been a few years ago when I was on the council, the mayor at that time, city manager, and a couple of councilmen and myself, we invited the chief, assistant chief, and the business director down. And I remember after we were speaking, after a while, the city manager said, looked at the chief and said, "You guys want the same thing that we do." And that, I'm glad he said that, because I'll never forget that, because you're right. The tribe wants Southeast Oklahoma to prosper. We want McAllister to prosper, and I think when the tribe does, McAllister will. When McAllister prospers, we will. And we spend our money locally in Southeast Oklahoma, in our 10 and 1/2 counties, and we want quality education, we want quality healthcare and healthy people, and we want quality jobs, just like the city of McAllister does. So it's very important that we continue this partnership with each other, and that's why I wanted to present this to you tonight. So let's go on to the next page. This gives you some information about our reservation here, the 10 and 1/2 counties. It's interesting, there is 88 million people within a 500-mile radius of Southeast Oklahoma, and that's ones we're recruiting for tourism and business, to bring their business here. On the next page, it gives us a, our Choctaw Nation Reservation demographics snapshot. Per capita income, that's everybody in Southeast Oklahoma. Everybody in our Choctaw Reservation is $21,200. $18.54 is the average hourly earnings in the Choctaw Reservation. 16% of the people in the Choctaw Reservation have a bachelor's degree or higher. And then the average yearly earnings is $46,800. This is a lot of good information that we believe that our communities can use. I'm very impressed with the Choctaw Nation and the people we have working for them. It's, I mean, we've got people that are specialized in analytics, data research, and you can ask them, they come up with the chart, and these numbers just like fly right through it, and they can present us and give us a lot of information. The average age in Southeast Oklahoma is 41, so I think we're all above average here. Weldon, you're a little above average, too, according to this.
This is age discrimination, period.
Oh, sorry about that, man. I couldn't help. The minority population is 29%. The next page gives you some information for male and female, and the ages there.
Now, we'll back up.
Okay.
Population distribution. I think you've messed up on Pittsburgh County.
Where is that here?
You got to say 5%. The way I figured, it's more like 17%.
5% of the population, age, cohort.
I assume you're talking about the 255,000 there.
They should be. Population distribution breakdown.
And it doesn't add up to 100% without 17% for us.
I'm going to mark that down. We'll ask them.
Is that Choctaw population?
No, this is, this is.
This is everybody, isn't it?
Yes.
255,000?
Yes. This is everybody. And all of this is everybody in Southeast Oklahoma. So I will check that out. Get back with you. Thanks for bringing that up. The next page is our education demographics. Of course, we've got Southeast Oklahoma State, Carl Albert, Commission Technology Centers, and Eastern Oklahoma State College. Just going through this real fast, so, because I know you guys got a full agenda. Page 11 is interesting, the average annual earnings. In the U.S., it's 67,000; Oklahoma's 56,000; Choctaw Nation's the 46,800. But if you look at the middle of that page, it says, "The average earnings have grown by $20,300 in the past two decades at a 77% increase." So we're keeping pace, and we're growing, we've got a ways to go, but for Southeast Oklahoma, I think that's pretty good, and it's really made a big change in the last few years. Page 13 is quality of life statistics. It has the median home values. I think Bryan County, Etoka County, Pittsburgh County are all around 98,000 for home values, and it's got the cost of living ratio by counties down on the bottom. And I'm going through this fast, Weldon, so don't ask too many questions. Email them to me later. Page 15, retail sales trend. That's, it looks like Pittsburgh County's on top there, with Bryan County right behind us. That's very interesting, too. And then if you look at that commuter flow, we have 27,000 people that live in the 10 and 1/2 counties and commute to jobs outside of the Choctaw Reservation. 22,600 commute to jobs in the 10 and 1/2 counties from outside. So a lot of them may be in Texas. I know we have a lot of employees from Texas, Dennison, go to Durant, or just right outside that come to work here in McAllister. Unemployment rate, you guys are familiar with that? On page 19, 4.3, that was in 2018. I'm sure it's better than that now. Well, after the last six months, I'm not sure. These numbers may be kind of skewed from the last six months, so hopefully things will go back to normal. Page 21, the largest employers in the Choctaw Reservation, McAllister Army Base, 2,200 people, Tyson Foods down there, Broken Mottabell, 1,250, Southeast Oklahoma State University, 850, and again, there's some skewed numbers, because McAllister Regional Health Center had 800 last year, and I think they're considerably lower than that now. And then Choctaw Nation has 11,000 employees, so we're very much the largest employer in Southeast Oklahoma, and we're proud of that. Breaks it down into sectors down here, as far as percentage of the healthcare, all government, of course, including casinos, retail trade, and manufacturing. I'm not familiar with this next page on 23, gross regional product, but I bet Weldon is, or Kirk Ridenhour is, if he's here, but it's, it looked like Pittsburgh County's leading there, too, with Bryan County right behind us. Page 25 is, "Part of the economic development for the tribe is investing, recruiting businesses, and helping out with incentives, whether it's helping out the city or county, to bring in these businesses, and we've donated millions of dollars to bring in these businesses." As you see, the first five there are in Durant, and that's a lot of jobs. Three of them's got over 150 jobs or more, and the capital investment from bringing in these businesses is way up there in the millions. If you look over on the picture on the side of that, other side of that page, CMC, Commercial Metals Company, moved a steel mill down at Durant, and I know the Choctaw Nation contributed quite a bit to help bring them in. $300 million capital investment building that plant down there, created 240 jobs, they like have like 100 trucks a day going in and out of that plant. So hopefully, they'll keep coming north and hit Pittsburgh County and McAllister.
What does that might be, Robbie?
It's kind of a high-tech steel rebar steel mill, you know? Everything's changed now. I've got, with all the automation and the high-tech things you can do in manufacturing, so that's kind of what they geared that towards, and I'm not for sure exactly what they do, but I've heard it's rebar, different things like that.
I wonder where they get their iron ore?
I don't know.
Is it gas-fired?
I don't know. But they, they made a major investment in that city down there. Next page is entrepreneur page that we have as a tribe. We help small businesses, startups, and we have a lot of people doing that, and it just helps all of our local communities and cities. And then tourism is also a big part of economic development. You guys know that. Choctaw Country is promoting tourism. We work with Billy and Eddie for the city here, and I'm sure Pete's familiar with them. We work with every community in Southeast Oklahoma, again, trying to promote them with tourism dollars and economic development, business retention, business growth, and business expansion. The next page, there's an example right here of our Economic Development Fund that we contributed. Of course, one was the McAllister Street Escape Project down here on downtown. This other one, this picture, is a sports complex in Stigler. It is the best sports complex in Southeast Oklahoma. And I heard just today that, I think we contributed 1.5 million for that sports complex. It was a $3 million project, and they had, they've been having tournaments. They had a tournament, and they bring teams from Texas, Arkansas, all over Oklahoma. In Stigler, their convenience stores ran out of gas, Casey's and all of them. The stores ran out of food. McDonald's had their biggest day ever. So, you know, that investment in Stigler is blowing up the city economy, too. So it's a good investment when we can be able to do things like that. Next page is, "Growth in the Different Sectors." Again, Pittsburgh County has every one of these sectors, which is aerospace and defense, logistics, natural resources, remanufacturing, tourism, and food processing. I think Pittsburgh County and Bryan County's the only one that has all five of them or six of them. A little bit more about tourism. On the next page is our Choctaw Cultural Center. You can read about that. It's going to be a big tourism boost to Southeast Oklahoma. We would have already had it open if it wasn't for the pandemic, but hopefully later on this year, maybe first part of next year, we can open up to the public. But you guys need to come down and look at that and spend the day, because it's going to be, it's going to be something else. It's going to be really nice with a lot of great exhibits, movies, theaters. It tells, exhibit halls, children's exhibit areas, classrooms, gift shops, and cafes. We've got our traditional mound. You can see part of that back there, a stickball field, and a living village there. So I want to invite you guys to come down when that opens up. Spend the day or spend the weekend. You can go right across the highway to our resort, stay there, bring your kids. We've got movie theaters, bowling alleys, arcades, and then while they're doing that, you guys can go over and donate to our education fund. Next page is state and federal incentives. That's some of the areas that were zoned, Oklahoma Enterprise, and things that we promised on, and things like that, that's throughout the Choctaw Reservation. Here's the, what I'm really interested and excited about. Page 41, that's the Unmanned Aircraft Systems Integration Pilot Program, which Choctaw Nation was awarded as one of them sites, one of the 10 sites across the country by President Trump's administration a few years ago, and we're taking it, and it's growing, got a lot of interest in it. There's one of them, let's see, this is one of Bell, I think, and Uber's prototype, if you look at it, and they're drone taxis. They'll, what they're going to do is land on a building in New York, or Saudi Arabia, or Los Angeles, or Dallas, and say it's four, five business, people want to get in there and go two miles across the city instead of getting in the car and going like this and stopping, they're just going to go zit, zit, land on another building, roofed out, let them off, take care of their business. We think that technology is just going to be the next new technology in the next, maybe five, 10 years, and hopefully we can have some manufacturing plants around here that can, that's what I'm hoping for, to help them build this, provide a lot of jobs. I mean, I doubt if we see any around here, but in the bigger cities, people is going to pay for that, that have the money. So we're really excited about that. You can see the design of our hangars, research and development area down on the bottom, and there's some of them plat, there's some platforms there, too, on the back right-hand corner, and the one there on the front on the ground, but that's in construction right now, down here, just 30 miles from here. So I think the chief said a couple of years ago, this could be the next Silicon Valley if this thing continually works the way hopefully everybody wants it to, and so far it has. So that's great news.
This may be something you can't tell us, but you know, I know you work for Spirit. Is any of the technology that is going to be needed in that area down there something that Spirit up here would be able to handle?
This is a lot of new technology, but Spirit, when I left there, we were investing in a lot of new technology, 3D printing, the laser tracking, ferroarms, the new CNC machining centers, AI machines talk to. You put a block of aluminum in there, and it may tell you, and you go to cutting, whittling it out with a mill, and that machine will tell you, hey, you need to cut a little, maybe a hundred thousandths more off of this floor or this wall, you know, to make it within the tolerances. So hopefully, you know, we can see a lot of that around here. It's, we're going to have to invest more in, because these are all composite and electric motors, and so it'll be a lot higher tech than what we're building now, but that's kind of the way world's going, technology, so.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, you know, possible, you know, things for us to be looking at.
Just this week, I visited with Mr. Wilson out at Commission Technology and just working together with them, looking at things in the future that we can start training our kids right now at, to, because if we do have opportunities, a lot of the problem we have in Southeast Oklahoma is the quality workforce that we need, whether it's educated or technology, and we're trying to partner with our colleges and with the technology centers and trying to work out some ways where we can get some training in there that they'll need, and that's something that we're working on. Well, thanks for letting me come, and just, you guys look at that. If you have any questions, if I can't answer them, I'll bet I can find somebody who will or who can. Is there any other questions?
Got a couple of quick comments. The community partnership program is, you know, it's been wonderful for us. That money, the money that you guys have donated to us from that goes directly to our parks, so it's something that helps the community, everyone throughout the community, and it's a, it's a great benefit for us, and we really appreciate that. And the other is that economic development, your guys work really great with our guys. I mean, it's been, it's been a tremendously good partnership and really, they've really helped us a lot in bringing leads and just education and things like that. So thank you guys for both of those programs.
We got a lot of good people working for us. Thank you. I'll let them know. One more thing I'd like to, we made an announcement last week. We, as far as economic development program, we partnered with, or we matched Savannah, the city of Savannah is going to build a new park, walking trail, and park for the kids, and I think we're going to donate 68,000. We're having a, going down there next week for that. And let's see, there was something else. Oh, you were talking about the community partnership, and that is something that we give to the cities and the counties where there's Choctaw businesses. We kind of just take some of the funds we've received from our businesses and give them back to our community. It's just another, it's all tribal dollars, and none of this is with the exclusivity fees from the gaming compact. This is all other tribal dollars that we donate to back into Southeast Oklahoma. And we just need to spread the word and let people know that we want to be partners, and we live here, and we want what's best for McAllister and Southeast Oklahoma.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robbie.
Appreciate it.
We'll move to agenda item number two. Consider an act upon the authorization of a purchase from Freedom Ford of McAllister, Oklahoma, one new and unused 2024 Ford F-154X4 with Lear Camper from Advantage Truck and Auto of McAllister, Oklahoma, for the fire department on the state of Oklahoma purchasing contract pursuant to Section 2-382 of the McAllister City Code. Funds to be used from the city's portion of the county quarter cent excise tax for fire services. Chief Brewer.
Mayor, council, we're asking to purchase a new vehicle for the Assistant Fire Chief. We're asking to purchase a new unused 2024 Ford F-154X4 from Freedom Ford in the amount of $26,093. Also, a Lear 100R camper shell from Advantage Truck. Also, a Lear 100R camper shell from Advantage Truck for the amount of $1,870. Total package not to exceed $28,000. And as you said, we're asking to fund that out of the fire department's portion of the county fire tax.
Any questions or comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Boatright, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Cor, would you call her up?
Councilman Boatright?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll move to agenda item number three. Consider an act upon the acceptance of a sub grant award from the Office of Homeland Security for reimbursement of the purchase of a replacement hazmat chemical identification unit. Chief Brewer again.
Yes, Mayor. As you said, we're asking to accept a sub grant from the Oklahoma Office of Homeland Security for a new hazardous materials chemical identification unit. That unit's valued at $60,950.
I get when other people pay for things for us.
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions, comments? I'll take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Boatright, second vice mayor Brown. Any discussion? Cor, would you call her up, please?
Councilman Boatright?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, council, thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to agenda item number four. Consider an act upon accepting the bid amount of $66,785 for the advanced construction and maintenance, or excuse me, from Advanced Construction and Maintenance LLC and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award for 2019 CDBG Phase II sewer project.
Councilman Mayor, my name is Dalton Carlton. The, we were going to, this is part of the continuation of the 2019 CDBG grant. We put out a bid and we had the first phase of the work done. We didn't spend enough money on it, so there's still grant money left, so we want to capture that grant money. So, we put out another bid to finish up some additional work to add to it so we can get the most that we can from the grant since it has matching funds. So, we put out another proposal in the same area and we got it, made it a very good price and we wanted to do the extra line work over there so we could capture the grant money and add a little bit of city money so we could get the most in our area for it.
This is in addition to the work that was done in third ward already?
Yes, sir. It's continuation of some lines over there to keep the project going further.
Any questions, Councilman Smith?
Two things. One, there's a huge difference in the bids, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you, you're fully confident that the winning bidder?
The winning bidder is the, is actually the contractor that did the work for the first phase. He was subcontracted by the original contractor, so he's actually completed the work so far as a contractor.
And you've been satisfied?
Yes, sir.
And then when you make up this bid sheet?
Yes, sir.
And there are two components and you choose the bidder based on the sum of those two. Could you have the sum across here so we can see?
Oh, for the future use, like add, add to where it has a total of both projects combined? Yes, sir, that'd be easy to do in the future. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Boatright, second vice mayor Brown. Any discussion? Cor, would you call her up, please?
Councilman Boatright?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number five. Consider an act upon accepting the bid amount of $80,000 from Bowling Construction LLC and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award for the 24-inch sewer main replacement, Peachtree Place.
Question to the city attorney. This is Billy Jack and I'm, I'm in the ward that this, this is going on and it's going, going to be touching some of my property. Am I allowed to vote on this?
On this issue, you probably don't benefit any more than the regular citizens do. You don't have a private interest in the, in the construction itself. You're probably safe to go ahead and participate both in the discussion and the vote, but I'll leave that to your good judgment.
He said, he said, he said you could because it's not going to benefit you any more than it would anybody else in the area. Councilman Smith?
Again, there's a huge difference in the bids over two times. So, you feel confident in the winning bidder?
They were vetted after the deal, so they, any of their list of contracts that they have before are on the contract, or whenever they do the bid, they actually have to put previous work on there. And so, it can be verified to the work that they have done before and they have done work.
I'm just trying to figure out how can there be a difference of, on the one hand, 80,000 versus 200,000 to do the same work? Does that pose a mystery to you?
This area that's, that's being constructed is, it's an open field. There's nothing really in the way. This, the lowest bid on this is actually a practical amount for the project that's at hand. It's not in the city limits. So, it's not in, what should I say? It's not within the, you know, a developed area where it's houses next to each other, where they're going to tear up a street or do any kind of work in a, where they're going to have tons of liability and everything. It's open field.
So, the explanation is these other companies didn't really want the...
Well, and, and some of those other companies, sir, they, what they do is they'll go in there and they'll put a high bid, maybe not thinking another people will turn in a bid. And that's the ones where they really hit the jackpot on. If they, if they do a higher bid and nobody else turns in a bid, that's when they make their money. But I'm confident the actual bid for the lowest bid was actually the reasonable bid. The other bids should have been closer to that bid. It's an open field out in the more remote area. It's very straightforward work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where is Peachtree Place?
It's at the end of, I didn't know the name of that area either. It's at the end of Park and Park, it, Park turns into it at the end of Park.
Okay. I know no one gets mail there.
Peach Street or something?
It's, it's very close to the East Sewer Plant.
Okay.
Majority of it's there close to the canal anyway.
Yes, sir.
So, it's...
The actual paved road that goes to it is Park and then it turns into a field. So, it's a...
Okay, so, I was just curious because I was pretty sure I knew every street in town.
I don't believe there's a street sign that says Peachtree Place over there.
All right. Any other, any other questions or comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Boatright. Any further discussion? Cor, would you call her up, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox? Councilman Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
We're on to agenda item number six. Consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign the work order for professional services with Infrastructure Solutions Group LLC for engineering services for water tower controls and distribution improvements. Mr. Stasiak, is this yours?
It is not. We have infrastructure solution engineers here and we also have Dalton Carlton. This is a project that was identified with the water study that was recently presented to the mayor and staff. And it's a recommendation going forward which will help assist in the ability to fill our water tanks to their maximum level and also repair some water lines and SCADA systems so that we can read, read those tanks better.
So, this is, this is the communication problem that we have with, from the Buffalo Tower to the plant?
This is part of that, yes, sir. And then it's also the installation of new water line from the Buffalo Tower down to Carl Albert Parkway. So, I'll let them.
Yeah, great introduction, Pete. That, that was the number one project on that 29 project list was this project. What we're getting ready to do is trying to get this shovel ready. That means plans are done, on the shelf, ready to be built because there's some opportunities that are coming up for the city shortly, you know, very soon. I don't want to steal thunder from the staff, but they'll be coming to present to you some grant opportunities. This project being shovel ready means we're getting, the engineering is going to be done. We're going to do this designed as fast as we can to get a DEQ permit in hand. So, next month when they come back to you, you've got a shovel-ready project ready to go to be able to match your infrastructure dollars with some grant dollars. So, this is for the design. We'll get it started, get it permitted. This fee also includes resident project representative looking forward whenever construction is started. Those grants require a professional representative to be on site and this is included in all of that. So, this is not only the design, this is for the construction services too.
Councilman Smith?
What's the total cost of this project?
Right now, the preliminary estimate for the entire overall project is about $900,000.
And you do the fees on a percentage basis, don't you?
That is correct.
What's the, what are those percentages?
I'll pull off the top of my head. I don't know.
They usually average somewhere between eight and 12, up to 14% depending on the engineering firm.
The construction total was about 735 and our fee was 68,000. So, that's about 9%.
So, construction was about 735,000. So, maybe it was 8%.
It's on the lower end of the, of the fee range.
The higher the cost goes, the lower the percentage of fee goes. So, a little bitty project has a higher percentage.
Got you. Thanks.
But, Councilman, we normally see fees associated with all engineering firms in that eight to 12% range.
Any other questions or comments? Take a motion in a second. Sorry, I was going to call her up. Uh, motion, Councilman Smith, second vice mayor Brown. Any further discussion? Cor, would you call her up, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number seven. Consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between Tyler Technologies and the city of McAllister for hosting and cloud services for in-code financial software in the amount of $68,540 for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Mayor and council, this is the, Tyler Technologies is the software company that we use. This is replacing a current contract. We are headed to the next level of cloud. Let me see if you can hear me better. This is going to be cloud hosting and this will help with the off-site capabilities because all of our locations will have the same speed and you can actually log in anywhere in town from, by hosting this. But also, we have servers that we have to replace and, and those kind of things. That'll take that future cost away from us by going to this. And it's, I think, better, they cover the security, they cover backup, they, a lot of additional services.
Would this, would this benefit if, if there were people that had to work from home again?
Yes. That's one of the main concerns. But we can also go virtual with our court system with this and, and other additional things that gives us capabilities. We, we don't have as good of capabilities right now.
Any, any questions or comments?
And it is legal. I sent you an email with the changes between the packet and the suggestions that legal had.
Yes, so the, the, the motion to approve would include the...
The changes.
The, the changes in the contract.
Yes. It was page one, page 13, and page 14, and they were bold and underlined changes.
Are there any, any questions or comments? Take a motion in a second to approve with the changes and the, as the city attorney has recommended.
My question.
Okay, motion, Councilman Boatright, second, Councilman Stevens, uh, Smith. I'm having a hard time tonight. Any further discussion? Cor, would you call her up, please?
Boatright?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number eight, a presentation of monthly financial update. Ms. Swift?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, in your packet today, your normal reports and graphs that we've got available to you, this concludes our fiscal year of 19 and 20, ending June 30th of 2020 with 100% complete. And the first report you have is the general fund at a glance. As of June 30th, we have, a total revenues reflect 7.51% under budget. Expenditures are at 10.53 under budget. As you are all aware of, you know, our financial situation where we really hunkered down and really controlled our spending in that, in these last few months are reflected here. And I think we did a pretty good job of keeping that in control and pretty proud of that, that fact there. Below that is the MPWA fund at a glance, revenues at 7.58 under budget, expenditures at 7.03 under budget, same situation. Unfortunately, you know, we would have rather have our revenues being up there, but we did control our expenditures to match that. And again, controlling is, was key in these last few months. The next graph is a monthly comparison on previous three years with general fund sales tax revenue. As you can see with June, sales tax number is in a decline over last year but increased over last, last month. Your next report is used tax. Used tax is down from the previous month but over last year. And we continue to see that growth happening and anticipated, continue to grow in the next few months as well. The last graph is our water revenues for both residential and commercial and our water districts and wholesale. The top graph there is water sales for residential and commercial increase are up over the previous month and slightly up over last year. The water districts, we're seeing an increase over last month and a slight increase, just slightly over last year. We continue to work pretty aggressively getting the water district meters swapped out and, which has contributed to this increase of revenue. And we should see also real, real soon, the impact will reflect with the rate increase that we approved in our, in the council before.
You have seen an increase, you think, with the new ones?
With the new ones, yes. Yes, we've already seen that increase with the few that, I mean, the ones that we have replaced.
No. If you look at the chart, this is the first month in the entire year that we're above last year.
Exactly. So, making a decision to get those addressed and, and swapped out has been obviously a good plan. The Treasury's report... Um, the Treasury's report, um, is required, uh, a report that shows, um, each of you, uh, what we have as far as cash in the bank. Any questions?
Good job.
Thanks. You're welcome.
All right, we are on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Consider and Act Upon Authorizing the City of McAllister to Allocate Funding in the Amount of $30,000 to be used as matching grants for local businesses and purchasing face masks and/or face coverings. Councilman Stevens?
Yes.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I sent this to, to Mr. Stasiak last week before we had our, uh, our council meeting about the mandatory mask. But kind of what was on my mind at that time is just really kind of making it more accessible for the community and dispersing them through the community. Although, you know, there's a certain level of responsibility of each one of us on, on what we do and things like that. But I thought this could be a very low threshold, um, that we could do in partnering with businesses, uh, where they could show us receipts paid and things like along those lines, and we provide matching grants up to a possibility of $250 or, or something like that. It was, it's more of a loose idea at the moment. But the way I see this and the vision that's kind of working out is practically, and I'm also, I'll tell you all the same thing I said, Pete, was how I see this working out practically is businesses showing receipts for purchases of face covering up to an excess of $250, and the city shall match the amount for the purchase and helping out, to offset the costs. I think it helps relieve the pressure of businesses trying to enforce it. If there's a mandate in place or not, it will help keep our business sustainably running, protect those at risk, working and shopping, and help normalize something that's a fairly low threshold of sacrifice for our community and neighbors. I'm hoping this can release some tension about masks and covering and help normalize it a little bit in our community. That's not all necessarily going to be true, but I kind of would like to hear the council's thought on maybe for, providing some kind of program like this in the community and, and having staff work on it, um, and allocating some funds. Now, one, one tweak I would like to make, and then I'll turn it over and hear everyone else's thoughts, is that if we take this money, if my understanding is correct, then we can possibly receive a reimbursement from CARES Act funding, maybe from the state. I'll leave that up to, uh, City Manager Stasiak, maybe even the American shit some light on that as well. But the way I see this working out is that we could possibly take $30,000 out of economic development, turn around and allocate it for these funds, come up with a program to do this. Maybe it's face masks and coverings, maybe it's sanitizer, maybe it's some other objects as well that can help provide some safety to our community and, and allow us to continue to operate in these kind of trying times. But it's something that we could take that money, allocate it for this, and then try to receive reimbursement from CARES funding. So with that, I'll open it up to the rest of the council for their thoughts or questions.
Uh, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilman Stee-, oh, sorry, I have a question for Councilman. Uh, Councilman Stevens, how would you determine what businesses get this, get these masks?
Everybody.
I would really determine that by which ones might want to apply for it. You know, I, I certainly would think that there would be several that would. And maybe that's something that we need to cap it where there's a certain amount of employees, or maybe it's, you know, these people that meet these parameters. But I'd like to leave it loosely open, um, mainly because I think it actually helps us with people that are in high risk or people that are in high-volume areas, you know? If it's this, that, or the other, if it's people shop, if it's, you know, maybe a church might want to apply for this and help provide it at their services and stuff as well, then it's something that we can do sustainably that can help our community. So it, to me, I think that's something that can be fleshed out if we want to allocate the funds and help me out, we might want to pursue that. But that's certainly a good question.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think probably, uh, the easiest way to do that would be just first come, first served, because, uh, uh, up to $30,000 for the 250 max, that's a hundred and twenty businesses if every single one of them took the max. And keep in mind, in order to get 250, they have to spend 250 as well. So it, uh, uh, most, most, I don't think most would be maxing it out anyway. And, um, since we passed the ordinance requiring masks, I did have a number of people contact me saying, uh, that buying a mask could cause them a financial burden, which, you know, may or may not be. But I would, uh, I would prefer not to have someone say, "I can't wear a mask because I can't get a mask," whenever, uh, whenever we could make them available with money, with money that, uh, is, is exactly what the CARES Act reimbursement, uh, money is about. It's for, it's for reimbursing funds spent, uh, on COVID-19-related expenses. So, uh, this falls under that, uh, very clearly to me. So, Councilman Smith?
I think Cully's heart's in the right place, but I think this is gilding the lily. I think everybody either has a mask or can make a mask. You can make a mask out of an old T-shirt or a handkerchief. A lot of, you know, as far as I know, every business I've known that's required it, hand them out, and it hadn't been a huge financial burden. I just think the city at this time has a lot of other things that take priority. And even if we're reimbursed from the federal government, somebody pays for it in the end. So, you know, let everybody provide their own mask. It is not that difficult.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
Mayor, this is Councilman Cox. I have a question for Councilman Stevens, and then also a comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilman Stevens, uh, by chance, could you reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and see what, uh, see if there was interest in, in the, the members that they serve and what they maybe thought? How many would actually use this if we did pursue it?
Councilman Cox, I did not. But that's something that, if this is why we want to pursue that, I'd be happy to put the chamber and possibly see if it's something that we could get in front of their membership as well.
Okay, I, I think it would be a good idea to reach out to them and make it mainstream as well. And then, and then my comment is that if we're going to pursue this, I think we need to open it up even a little bit more. I, we need to ensure that our, our homeless community, our shelters, um, you know, anybody that serves the, the low-income communities, make these available to that, that group of individuals that may not have access to masks easily.
Uh, Mayor, if I may, if I can respond?
Yes.
Uh, that's exactly how I see this as well, Councilman Cox, is I'd like it where it's the general public, where they'd be giving them to the general public for free. This isn't necessarily where we just do it and the businesses benefit from having reimbursement for masks or matching grants, but actually be distributed through the, the community. I, I strongly agree with that. I think that's excellent points to do, to ensure that those places have access to it. We would, I mean, maybe go out of our way to try to couple with them and help them as well.
City manager, is this something that we could use the, the CARES fund that we have already received? Can we take a portion, you know, buy $10,000 out of the money we've already received and apply it towards this?
Councilman, we could, but this is reimbursable money, uh, through the CARES Act. So that money is already, uh, being, being positioned for other needs within the city. So if this council deems, uh, this to be necessary and this reimbursement, then it is, um, it is just a, a process where we do a reimbursement, a monthly reimbursement on our, on our return. So, um, it's probably best that we just go ahead and allocate the tu-, the funds through economic development and ask for the reimbursement on the back. That way, it leaves the other money in, in place that we've already, uh, have plans for.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
How many businesses are, is this going to affect? I mean, that don't already have the mask in place, because you, you walk to any business, they got a box of them sitting there in front of them. Are we attempting to reimburse them for that? Or are we attempting to ask all of them to start buying more masks?
From the way I understand it, and Councilman Stevens, you can tell me if I'm wrong, is, uh, that any, any business or, uh, as Councilman Cox, uh, referred to, uh, nonprofit possibly even, that bought masks after this was passed, and say they spent $100 on the masks, that we would, we would actually give them $50. Or, uh, we, we would, we would match their $100, or, or we would, you know, we would match, basically, we would pay half of what they pay for masks.
Why wouldn't we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, if it's gonna, if it's gonna clear, I think $250 for most businesses is way too much. I think we need to put at least a $50 or $100 cap on it as to what we pay.
Any, anything else? Any further?
If, if I may, Mayor, um, I wouldn't mind to make a motion this evening, and this will be my, there's a second for it, that we allocate $30,000 from economic development for this program and then direct city staff. If it would be the will and it'd be okay, I'd like to work with them to prepare a program to bring before council, uh, to approve that program, how it would look by the next, uh, by the next council meeting.
Was that a motion? Councilman Stevens, was that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would, I would second that, and, uh, uh, doing it that way would allow the city staff to, uh, contact all of the council members for their input on it as well without violating any Open Record, Open Meeting Act, uh, so.
Yeah, and, and I think that there's been a lot of good points made, and I think what Councilman Boatright just said was, is a good point as well, something that we need to look into, and that'll give us some time to contact the chamber and some other entities in the community as well, too.
Is there any further discussion?
Um, this is Joe Urban. I was just going to say, it, this, uh, will probably also require an amendment to the budget, which, you know, has to be done with the, uh, you know, posting of an ordinance and that kind of thing. And so before, before any expenditure of funds, we'll need to do the amendment to the budget. But that's not, that's not something that can't be done before the next meeting.
Mayor, what is the motion exactly?
The motion is to, is to allocate $30,000 from economic development for a program to, uh, uh, help supply masks. And then the, uh, the, that program will be worked out between the council and the administration and brought back to the council for approval. Any further discussion?
Mayor, this is, uh, Mayor, this is Councilman Cox.
Go ahead.
I, I would just like to, uh, see if, uh, Councilman Stevens would reconsider the 30,000 and maybe reduce it down to 15 just to, to get the program started.
You, I think you would have, I think you'd have to make that in the form of a, an, a, a motion to amend.
All right, then I will make a motion to amend it, to lower the, the 30,000 down to 15.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Saying none, the motion dies. Is there any further discussion on the, uh, the original motion?
Mayor, if I may respond to Councilman Cox's, uh, his motion, if that's okay, since we're still in discussion?
Yes.
Um, I'm not opposed to taking a look at that when we come back again. I would just like to allocate the funds, the program set up, and then get some direction from, from the council once we have the program at this next meeting. So I'm not opposed to adjusting the amount or doing that. I would just like to see us set some of this aside, and maybe we can even have some input, and maybe there's a way that we can expand it or realize it's too.
Why wouldn't we establish the program and then seek the funding?
Because I think this is a good, necessary first step to establish if we even want to do a program.
Is there any further discussion? Cory, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Boatright?
No.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Cox?
No.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are now on to new business, any matter not known or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with Section 311.9, Title 25 Oklahoma State Statutes. Do we have any new business?
We do not, Mayor.
In that case, we will move to City Manager's report.
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to inform everybody that, um, we received word yesterday that utility payments, that we have now established a 1-800 or 1-866 number, uh, for utility payments, so that can all be automated going forward, no longer takes a individual to answer that phone. So we'll be getting out that information, uh, here very quickly, and hopefully the public will start using that for their utility payments. Should help out, alleviate a lot of the phone calls that we're currently receiving in the utility department. Uh, the other thing I want to do is talk a little bit about, uh, our employees and the, uh, staffing levels that we're currently at. Uh, we've made a lot of changes, uh, to the city over the last couple of weeks as we rebuild the city, rebuild the departments, and rebuild the staffing. I'm going to talk to you, uh, this evening about our furloughed employees, our part-time employees, and also our retirement employees. I think everybody's aware that when we hit the peak of the pandemic and, uh, the anticipated shortfalls of the, of the city's revenue, we were down about 60 employees at that time, or 25.3% of our entire workforce, was either, took any early retirement, uh, was a position that had been frozen, or furloughed employees. So over the last, uh, four to six weeks, and I'm going to talk about also the employees that are coming back next Monday, because we've been staggering people in here, uh, over the last couple of weeks. We have brought back, uh, three employees into the Nutrition Recreation Department, five into the Land Maintenance Department, one at the airport, two in Community Development, four in Administration, two in Fleet Maintenance, one in Streets, one in Facility Maintenance, and one in Utilities, um, our, our Utility Office. In conjunction with that, uh, it was very important that if we bring these employees back, we had to make sure that we had the materials and supplies, uh, for them to do their job as we move forward through the next fiscal year. So we are adding materials and supply, uh, funding to each one of these departments so that we, uh, so they have the necessary tools to do their job. One other thing that, uh, that occurred this la-, this, during this month is we had our first, uh, furlough day scheduled for last Friday, July 24th. And because of the money that we received through the CARES Act and also the, uh, increase in sales tax that we saw, we were able to cancel that furlough day last Friday. And so, uh, we did not have to take that furlough day, and all employees, uh, worked and were paid for the day. As we move forward month by month, we will look at each month, look at our revenues, look at our expenditures, and determine month by month whether or not we need to take that furlough day or whether or not we can cancel it. Uh, one thing that we've been very, very careful about here is as we bring employees back, we're not looking at it as a one, two, or three-month period of time. We are funding each one of these positions through the end of the year. The only thing that would change is if we had another catastrophe and our sales tax revenue or revenues of the city plummeted again. So what we've done is, uh, through next Monday, we brought back 21 furloughed employees, two part-time employees and one, and filled one retirement position. Uh, we are currently, um, uh, advertising for police officers. We've had a number of, uh, people respond to those ads. Uh, we're doing testing and interviews starting this weekend. Uh, we're continuing to work on the Police Department. We have, uh, uh, replaced one of those positions from a re- We have replaced one of those positions from a retiree, and that individual started yesterday with the city. So we continue to fund all departments and bring all departments back as evenly as we possibly can as we rebuild this city. So I just wanted to give a quick little update on the number of employees. As of next Monday, we will have brought back all the furloughed employees, and we'll start working on the retired positions and the open positions based on safety and needs of the city. The last thing I want to leave you with is, as you're aware, our first CARES reimbursement through the CARES Act was $1,250,000. Our June request for reimbursement is $367,000 and change. And we anticipate hearing something about that reimbursement sometime this week. These are monies that we have not spent. These are monies that we are not, we're anticipating, but we're not spending them until they get back, back here to the city as we rebuild the city. So just wanted to give you that update and let you know that things are coming back together for the city.
It's nice to get some good news. We are on to remarks and inquiries by city councils. Councilman Smith?
I just wanted to ask Pete, I have several citizens who are concerned about animal control. Did your statement about getting all the furloughed people back in a week or two, did that cover that position?
That individual was a retired employee. And I can tell you that we are going to be looking at that position during the month of August and see whether or not we can possibly fill that position. I don't have anything else.
Councilman Stevens?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Cox?
Nothing to note, Mayor.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the council for such an honor. And means a lot. I've been here a long time and, you know, just hope I can, if I have to step in, hope I can do half as well as you do, Mayor.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to comment on the animal control, that the young lady from Cribs, if you need her, I mean, she seemed to get right over there, and she does a great job. I'm not going to say she want to come over here, but she does an excellent job.
Councilman Boatright?
Yes, I have a question for Pete. I've had several calls to me that I don't have an answer for. I understand that we're getting rid of some of our industrial property. Is that a true fact? Are we holding on to it? Are we selling any of it? Or what are we, what's our?
No, in order to sell any property of the city of McAllister, it's a function of this council. And this council has to make that approval. And we have, we're not selling any property at this time.
Well, I don't know, because I wasn't a part of, so I, I'm asking a question that has been proposed to me.
We, we do not have any property for sale at this time.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
So it's, it's nice to get some good news for a change. And we have, hopefully, things are moving in the right direction and we can start, start being able to count on a, a more stable future than we have had to go through here lately. So that's, that's all that I have at this time.
Councilman Pritchard?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Pritchard, I'm sorry. Councilman Boatright's sitting in your chair, and I skipped over you.
I'm sure no one minded. I do have a question, though, for the city manager. Do you have any update you can share about the FOP negotiations?
I do. We actually met with the FOP this morning at 10:30, and they did not have another proposal for us. We did give them a, another proposal that will be considered by the lodge. They're going to call an emergency meeting. We hope that they'll have that meeting by Friday. And they, they, those meetings usually occur in the evening. And so I'm hoping to hear something over the weekend or Monday morning to see what their thoughts are on the, on the proposal that we gave them.
Okay, good. And second, this is, this is a comment. Since we met last Thursday for the meeting and adopted the mask ordinance, there have been a significant number of new cases reported in Pittsburgh County and a significant increase in the number of active cases. And that ordinance is, I believe, is not going to go into effect until the 23rd of August. But we could still believe with a vote of five council members, declare an emergency. So, you know, I would urge the council members that voted no on that emergency provision to reconsider in light of the increasing cases in our county. Thank you.
Now, with that, we will recess the council meeting. I would take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from July 14th, 2020, regular meeting of McAllister Airport Authority, confirm action taken on city council agenda, I, excuse me, on city council agenda item B regarding claims and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Boatright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. And now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from the July 14th, 2020, regular meeting of McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on city council agenda item B, four, five, six, seven, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Vice Mayor Brown. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I'd now take, take a motion to convene as McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from July, June 23rd, 2020, regular meeting of McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, approval of retirement benefits for the period of July 2020, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Vice Mayor Brown. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox? Councilman Cox?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll now reconvene, and I would take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Second Councilman Boatright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.